To order, it is six bells. We'll take a roll call vote, please signify by saying here, Bob here, Brenda.
Here.
Anna.
Here.
Katie.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Rebecca.
Here.
Okay, we'll begin by saying the pledge of allegiance, if so inclined, you can stand up and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Like, yeah, I'd say.
And which is one nation.
Just a reminder to everyone now that's in attendance this evening, could you please turn off your sales or mute them? As a courtesy to to others, so that we can get through our meeting without distraction. We have one addition to the agenda. And we'll list that as new biz item four. And it's a approval of a leave of absence that will take place, well Jeff will let us know. But please mark one more agenda item under new beers consideration to approve. A leave of absence. Having said that, I'm looking for a motion to would to approve the agenda as shown with amendment.
I'm like, I'll make a motion, this is Anna.
Thank you, Anna. Second.
I'll second, this is Rebecca.
Rebecca on the second other discussion. Okay. Under the roll call, a yes vote be for the approval of the agenda, Rebecca.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Katie.
Yes.
Anna.
Yes.
Brenda.
Yes.
Bob, yes, that passes by a six zero vote. Scheduled presenters, we have a representative here from Kraus Anderson who will review our referendum brochure. Jeff, turn it over to you.
Yes, I see Tony Scholander from Kraus Anderson along with Gary Benson will be joining us tonight to review the agenda or the brochure. That will hopefully be out in the mail late this week or early next week. As we work on getting our mailing labels from the state. It was what's kind of holding it up, but anyway. Tony and Gary, I'll turn the the show over to you if you want to run us through with the highlights of the brochure here.
All right, this is Tony Scholander with Kraus Anderson and with me is Gary Benson. So what I like to do is Jeff, if you're driving the PowerPoint or not the PowerPoint, but the presentation there. If you can go down to the next page there on the inside of the brochure where we've got the timeline going across there.
Yeah.
So. We have worked with Gary and I and Megan from Kraus Anderson have worked with Jeff Sampson to pull this together. And I think your story is is best told really in terms of the levy referendum and the bond referendum going back to about 2015, and I think the timeline more or less tells your story of between 2015 and 2019, you were underway with your one to one initiative. And there were some dollars invested in indoor air quality to about 50% of your middle school, high school building. And essentially that put the district in a situation where there were about $300,000 worth of cuts that needed to be made to keep the budget balanced when Jeff came on board in July of 2019. And essentially then you had that strategic plan that was done. And the nice thing about this, and I think it's very gives you a lot of credibility as a district is the fact that you've got a strategic plan with the with five strategic initiatives. And this referendum is essentially addressing two out of those five very directly. Checks those box boxes very nicely. The facilities condition assessment was done in the summer of 2020 to come up with the scope and the budget for the project. And then you as a board had a survey done throughout the community. Again, I think a lot of credibility you've you've given community engagement. It's it's due and you have gone out to the community. And I like to say that the community has told you that they're willing to support you at tax tolerances that they have shared with you rather than refer refer to it as the survey. So we have a saying at Kraus Anderson, we work with school perceptions a lot. And I think you've done a nice job by not using your referendum as the survey, but rather going out proactively to the community and saying, hey, here are the deficiencies that we see. And they align, you know, implementing these an action plan is very consistent and aligns with our strategic plan. And so then, of course, in February recently, you all passed a resolution to go forward with the May 11th referendum. And here we are now kind of sitting in between that February 8th arrow and the May 11th arrow. I'm going to refer you to the front page. Jeff, if you could go to the front page where we talk about the the on the left side there, we talk about the strategic plan for the future of the Cannon Falls area schools. And if we page down just a little bit, you'll see obviously those five items that are no stranger to you all, you came up with them. And the second and the third bullet points, which are your strategic initiatives are for that balancing the fund, the fund balance, excuse me, to make sure that the district is financially stable with within board policy. And then also going on to developing that long range facilities plan and budget. That includes a maintenance program. And so if we go over to the right side of the page, we walk through. I won't read this in detail, I'll simply hit the high points, obviously in question one. We talked about the capital project levy referendum as really described in that timeline that we walked through as it relates both to the technology and replenishing the technology budget in that respect. And then also then we move on to step two with question two, and that's where we pick up the indoor air quality. You were spending dollars in LTFM previously for that first half of the high school, middle school to address that back in 2015. Now, like most districts, it's just not such that you've got dollars to be able to finish that in your operating budget, and so we're going to go out and bond for that. Per the per the question number two, question number two, of course, addresses improving learn app, learning opportunities for students in your current technical education space. And what we know is that that space hasn't been touched for 60 years. And in effect, we want that space to reflect flexible learning space and give you the ability to prepare students for jobs and a job requirement situation. That's just so very different today, let alone in the future than it was 60 years ago when the building was built. Question three addresses the indoor gymnasiums, both at the middle school slash high school as well as the elementary school. And what we're doing there is in order to keep the the budget for the referendum consistent with what your community said they would support you at. In that survey, that community wide survey, we are no longer replacing the gym floor, rather we're simply refinishing it. But for the area of the elementary school that had some water damage and that warped. And so that small portion is being replaced. Otherwise it'll tie in real nice because the rest of it, the balance of it will be sanded. And so then we get to the outdoor components where you've got a significant crown in the field out there. And so re-crowning that and most importantly, I think for me, as I learned more about your project was that soil is so hard out there right now because it's not irrigated. You've got a defective irrigation system in the ground, and so it's a matter of pulling that out and replacing it with a functioning irrigation system so that you're able to soften up that soil and provide a little more cushion for athletes and people that might have an impact with the ground in that area. And so we're also refinishing the track as well as providing outdoor lighting. And then question four goes to the issue of synthetic turf in lieu of what we were proposing in question three, which was grass turf. And essentially you're a majority of the way there with grass turf and the improvements to the irrigation system and the substrate underneath the the grass that the increase as a result of question four would simply add the the synthetic turf for the outdoor areas and provide really flexibility in terms of providing more space for the programming that you already have. I think it's been said that several different groups, whether it be JV for practice and for games, people are going to have the opportunity to use it if they so choose. And we worded that in such a way that we said activity groups of all activity groups would be able to use that if they're interested. And so with that, we go on, we talk about the scope there, we move on to what is this potentially going to cost me? And a couple of things I would draw your attention to over on the left side there. We've got the different classifications for residential homestead and then commercial, industrial and agricultural. And when we look at the what the tax impact is, those numbers are the kind of numbers that folks saw when they looked at the survey, community wide survey. What wasn't shown at that point was the Minnesota property tax refund. It's a residential property tax refund. So just to the right, over on the right side of the page, if you can go up just ever so slightly, Jeff, thank you. Where we talk about tax relief measures. And so the two examples that we're showing there are where we're doing the math is showing what what will this ta- what will the tax impact be for a for a residential homeowner that meets the requirements and is eligible for a residential property tax refund? So let me talk about what that is. And this is really, you're really fortunate in the sense that the Minnesota State property tax refund is a program that is income dependent and it's driven by the value of your home. So if you have household income of less than $116,000 and change, you are eligible for a residential property tax refund. And it's quite significant and in a matter of fact, a couple of examples that we show down below in that red graphic, Jeff, if you can kind of circle that, thank you with your, thank you with your cursor. What we know is that the average home in Cannon Falls is valued at approximately $225,000. That's the first column, the second column is, again, this is an example. Let's just say for a moment that the homeowners that lived in that house had household income totaling $80,000. What what it would mean is that before that tax refund, it would be, if you could circle that column, it would be $126 a year tax impact or a little over $10 a month. However, due to this residential property tax refund, the homeowners in that case would receive a $76 refund off of that $126 property tax, which would result in a $50 per year tax impact. If you do the math and divide it by 12, it's roughly $4 a month. And so that's for all three bond questions or for all the bond questions. And so quite a quite a important piece to point out. And again, I think if you go back and it's listed in your homepage on your website, you'll see the tax impact in that school perception survey was really akin to what you see over there on the left side. And so this is over 50% off if you've got the household income of about $80,000. One of the other benefits here and what we know is that this will impact your ag landowners is that a house, excuse me, an ag landowner in 2021 this year without the new referendum on the tax books will pay more in fact than a agricultural landowner will pay in the year 2023 with the bond referendums passed. So if we contrast those three bars on the far right, if you look at 2021, contrast it with 2023, you'll see that in fact, even with the referendum, an agricultural landowner will pay less in the future. And so a couple of things definitely worth pointing out. The, as you know, the ag to school tax credit is continuing to increase from 60% next year in 2022 to 70% in 2023. And over on the bottom left, we've got a couple of things talking about why now, what we know is that the community supported the tax tolerance for this in the community wide survey. And we're referencing that. But why now historically low interest rates and historical construction market? It, most of you probably have gone over. And if you haven't been over at Menards or Home Depot recently and seen the price of lumber and your jaw probably hit the floor when you saw it. We are in fact seeing increases in materials, however, the the benefit that we're seeing right now in the K 12 school market throughout the state of Minnesota is that contractors are so hungry because a lot of the other market sectors have frankly dried up. You can't, you know, you can't imagine anybody building office space or retail space right now. And so all those contractors that typically worked in those market sectors are coming over to the K 12 market. And we're getting, you know, twice as many beds as we typically are on projects in the past. So good with good competition comes good value and it is a buyer's market in that regard right now. So you find yourself in a double whammy good situation there in terms of the interest and the construction market. And finally, the referendum really is alignment in alignment with your strategic plan. Obviously, the district, the board and administration didn't just wake up last night and say, hey, I think it'd be a great idea to do a referendum. No, in fact, it was actually born out of a strategic initiative that said, hey, here's where we want to point the the ship and this is where the the rudder is is going to steer the ship. So on the front then we have some information that talks about where people can vote, when people can vote. And so as far as the public information meeting, that's listed there as well. Out of respect for COVID and social distancing, if people choose to come to the public information meeting on Monday, April 12th, they can do that at the middle school, high school auditorium. Or we've got the Zoom address there. And I know that the administration will be sending out information to the community to publish that and let everybody know when that's happening. And then there's all kinds of information that we've been working on. Jeff and Laura and Dorothy have been very busy. And if you go to the website for the district, like Dorothy's really done a nice job making that really nice and concise. And if you click on that referendum information, here we go. Takes you to the district website, so. Anyway, that's kind of my story and I'm sticking to it. Gary, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you covered it all on that. I mean, my only ad would have been that our review and comment has been approved now, but Jeff might want to talk about that. And then I think we'll talk about that more fully at the next board meeting when we have the public together.
Yeah, we were notified today that the state has approved our review and comment with a positive review. And so we'll be having a public meeting the same night for the review and comment as our public forum to take care of everything all in one shot for that night. And that'll be posted in the paper per statute requirement.
And I think if I could just add in the commissioner's letter, they noted that they haven't gotten any comments from your community or the public, you know, positive, negative or otherwise, which is often they do with referendum or reviewing comments that are out there. There may be the public getting hold of M D direct and asking questions about why it's being approved or is it necessary or feasible? And so that's a good thing that in your letter, they noted they have received none of those. But we still have to hold a public meeting where you at least bring up the topic of the review and comment, discuss that it was approved and see if there's any questions about it.
Yeah, so I'd like to, Tony mentioned earlier, Lori and Dorothy have been putting a lot of work along with myself over the past couple of weeks and in putting all of this together and they deserve a lot of recognition as well for gathering the information and 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 getting it ready for putting it out there. So a lot of work over the past two weeks, but we are ready to push out information as you can see.
Any questions here?
Yeah, it's Bill, I was wondering if we could have a little more information around the the ag land and the numbers there, because I think that's going to come up in conversation. And since we have a lot of egg land around the community, I think we should be very well versed on on how that's excuse me, how that's going to affect the landowners.
Sure. Jeff, you want me to take that for a moment?
Sure, that would be fine.
All right, could you go down in the lower right hand corner of this page? There you go to the pie chart. And what that does is it sort of, it it basically gives you a sense for where are the dollars coming from? And I'll, I think that'll answer the question. So if we start and we start at 12 o'clock and we basically go counterclockwise. The the orange section is excuse me, is basically showing that 15% of the sources for the funding for the entire bond referendum is coming from the state. And so that's actually the part of the agricultural, they call it ag to school tax credit. It has to come from somewhere and frankly, it comes, most of it comes 60% of the money that is used to pay for the ag to school tax credit comes out of the Twin Cities metro area and to pay that down. If you go to the next section, again, going counterclockwise, 7% of the sources of the funds are coming from people in your community who have got ag land and buildings. And that's associated with that, then you've got 20% commercial and industrial. And the majority of your your proceeds for your paying down your debt service, 58% is coming from your residential slash other. And so this varies obviously by district when we are dealing with some of the economically depressed districts up on, say, the Iron Range and so forth. We've seen situations where that residential slash other is 18% and the balance of the project, 81% of it is paid for by places like I triple R B and and so forth and the state. But those types of situations, just that's, that's just so unusual. Most of the time we're seeing something like this. And so I think it reflects the fact that the district has the majority of tax base in the district, of course, is residential. So hopefully that gives you a sense for and contextualizes the sources of the funds within your community. Is that, was it Bill?
Yeah, and I think that this time around is probably going to be different than when the field houses went out and bonded. Or is the ag to school tax credit has come into play since then? And so that that's a good talking point.
Yeah, and I think that's that's more of where I was looking because it's it's unusual that we're going to have landowners paying less considering what we're doing here, so. So I think just understanding that there is a tax credit there available for us to help fund this.
Yeah, this is, I think this pie chart's very dramatic. You know, if you just ask people intuitively how much you think the egg or farmers are paying, they probably think it was 58% or some, you know, more than half. And when you see it's 7%, that's pretty dramatically displayed here because because of what's changed in recent years with the legislation to take the burden off the farmers and rightfully so. So this is good news to display.
Absolutely.
I just, I I do think it's important to note though that that's land only. It doesn't include the 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 home and one acre of land and any like garage or anything is included in that 58%. Regardless of where you live. So this is land only. Right, so they are paying into both of those pieces. It's not just only 7% of our money is coming from the rural area because we farmers do pay into that 58% as well.
Yes.
That's 7% is just on land.
We have not, I have not seen this ag to school tax credit before or certainly showing in the video or or in this handout. Is this something new to us? Is this new information to us?
It's it's it started in 2014 and I can give you a real thumbnail of it. In 2014, it started and there was a big legislative initiative by the Minnesota Rural Education Association, M R E A, that Sam Wallseth, their lobbyist, and at the time Fred Nolan, they went to the legislature and said, hey, you know, it's not fair that ag landowners are paying the majority of the toll toll for the for bonded indebtedness for for capital projects and so forth. And so they passed a ag to school credit that gave farmers a 40% tax credit. And it just didn't move the needle. And so Sam and and Fred went back to the legislature and they were able to move the needle so that in 2021, you're you're paying taxes in 2021 for for on your on your property from 2020. That was a 55% tax credit. And so here's the upshot is that Sam and Fred were very successful in lobbying the legislature. So that in 2022, it'll, that tax credit will go up to 60%. And then, of course, in 2023, it'll become a 70% tax credit. That will be something that will automatically come off of their their taxes. Whereas if you, Jeff, if you go up to the top of the page, that residential property tax refund that I referred to down in the print, there, yeah, right above it there, it says for more information, visit So for that, you have to fill out and a it's called a form M one P R. And you have to file that typically just have your, if you do your property taxes where you're, if you, if your tax person does them, what have you. where you're if you if your tax person does them, what have you, you just fill that form out once a year. That is an annual program. So I'm getting a little bit away from the question about the egg to school. But the my understanding is that the egg to school automatically happens and it's it's that tax credit is is done. The state makes that happen. The the way you initiate the residential property tax refund is that you fill that M M one P R form out once a year. And obviously, as you can see, it it more than cuts the cost of the the referendum in half. Now, I'll give you, for instance, my mother in law lives up in White Bear Lake. Same thing happened in White Bear. It would have, that was the largest referendum in the state history is three hundred and twenty six million dollar referendum two years ago. It took the tax impact on her home would have been twenty three dollars a month. And due to this residential property tax refund, it reduced it to six dollars and sixty seven cents a month. And so it's obviously very significant. And so it's just a matter of filling out the form, submitting it, and then you will get a check in the mail.
It is significant.
Did I answer the question?
Questions or comments? Okay. Tony, Gary, thank you for your time.
Happy to help.
See you on the twelfth.
All right. Okay. Moving on, we're in the public input right now. Due to data privacy concerns, speaker may not address criticisms toward an individual district employee during public input. Does anyone out there have any questions, comments, concerns they'd like to address to the board about school related issues? Okay, moving forward, consideration to approve the finance report. Josh, you with us?
Yep, I am. Wish we got just the kind of cash flow worksheet, kind of a snapshot of where we're at in terms of cash on hand. We got here now through the middle of June, nearly the entire remaining of the the fiscal year. And just a few things to note on the the document that will stick out on the left hand column in the revenues is you'll see when we get towards you know, the end of May, beginning of June, we'll start to see the first half of calendar year twenty one county taxes start to come in. And those are estimates as of now, we usually get the actual amount updated to us. Generally, five to seven days before the draw actually occurs. Also on that, if you keep sliding towards the bottom, Jeff, sorry about that. No, that's right. You'll see the the school and the city portion of the energy funds that come into the district. Again, we had been paying off on an elementary roof. This year, we took the funds that had been paying off on that roof and used them towards you know, improving, updating and securing the front entry of the elementary school just building. So really kind of what the snapshot there for cash, the important part is you know, we're building towards having a balance layer again to offset debt payments as they come in. But the bigger picture is that we stay positive in cash and not having to do anticipation borrowing. You know, there's not a whole lot of detail in there as we've been working through things. Building now revised budgets for twenty one and preliminary budgets for twenty two coming up here, you'll see plenty of numbers coming in in future board meetings. But this is what we have as of now, if anything, that you have any questions on, certainly do my best to answer what you have.
We were going to get some relief from the government, from the feds concerning the COVID and our related expenses. Has that trickled to us as of yet?
Yes and no. We know that it will be coming. We don't know the exact date when it'll come or the amount. The second round, so to speak, of federal funds has been kind of held up in Senate and it could be released either before the end of session or at the end of session. And again, don't know the exact dollar for that, but it it'd be a significant amount to our district in helping relieve not only code related expenditures, but lost revenues that we've seen generally in the food service. We had a large deficit. We had to transfer general fund for general funds to cover at the end of fiscal year twenty. But we're going to see that same significant loss in food service revenue for fiscal year twenty one as we've had had not charged for student lunches. The other portion of the loss revenue would be the paying for essential care worker childcare. And assuming receive what estimated about three hundred and fifty thousand or so dollars in the second round. Large portion of that is already taken up by covering our offset in that food service and childcare loss and revenue. There will be a third wave, and that looks to be coming in for fiscal year twenty two. And it has been approved. We just haven't seen the dollar monster. You know, we can't encumber those funds until July one, so that will be part of the preliminary budget in twenty two. Assuming I get those dollar funds, but they are coming. It's just a matter of not, you know, having a concrete answer to give you in terms of the amount and when it will come.
So at this point, we don't you feel pretty positive, as does Jeff, about eight anticipation and we need needing at this point in time to borrow against it.
Yeah, I think we're looking fairly good there. Assuming the the round two of federal funds comes as stated, not only will we be able to help offset a lot of that lost revenue, but we'll be able to do without having a significant impact to the general fund being meaning that we'll stay on track to what we projected preliminary for this fiscal year twenty one budget, which all things considered is very good for the for the district financially. If we don't receive the amount, then it's a different question, but the C organization we have received some more information from M D. I think it's the outlook is pretty positive. We receive what has been kind of told to us.
Any other questions for Josh or Jeff finance report? If not, I would look for a motion to approve as shown.
I'll move to a pro spill.
Move by Bill second.
I'll second. It's Brenda.
Brenda on the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the finance report as shown. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna? Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Has everyone had a chance to look at their consent agenda? Jeff usually likes to showcase the donators. I'll hand it over to you, Jeff.
Sure. Thank you, Bob. These are all big thank yous to these individuals and groups that have donated to the school over the past month or so, two hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars from Gemini for football, three thousand dollars from the state of Minnesota for the Cannon Kids program, two thousand dollars from the fire department and football boosters for football helmets, fifty dollars for Danielle and Sharon Quam for live stream for games, five hundred dollars from three M and Jasmine Schola Field for the robotics team, two hundred and fifty dollars from Gemini for baseball, three hundred and fifty dollars from Gemini for Eagle Bluff, two thousand nine hundred ninety three dollars and seventy five cents from the bomber baseball concession for baseball coaches pay, three thousand five hundred dollars from David Olson and Artisan Plaza for products for the food service department, six hundred dollars from Gemini for E V D and special education Laura Rezak, fifty nine dollars and ninety eight cents for Patty Gergen for soccer balls and playground balls, twenty one dollars and fifty eight cents from Amy Fick for sport discs, eighty six dollars and ninety five cents from Tiffany for flying discs, jump ropes and playground balls, thirty seven dollars and ninety seven cents from Maggie Wilson for flying discs and face masks, eighty six dollars and seventy seven cents from Bonnie Showquest for scoop balls, beanbag toss and footballs, fifty six dollars and twenty two cents for Adam and Kelsey Templin for large ball bags and basketballs, fifty dollars and seventy cents from Mike Ayers for playground balls, five dollars and fifty nine cents from Tanya Miller for disinfecting wipes, twenty eight dollars and ninety seven cents from Kelly Helgren for disinfecting wipes and sporting discs, fifty dollars and ninety six cents from Zeke and Jolynn Williams for flying discs and face masks, twenty three dollars and ninety eight cents from Haley Anderson for jump ropes, two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty four cents from an anonymous source for footballs, wipes, jump ropes, discs, laminating pouches and balance balls. And finally, one hundred dollars from Karen Coakley for office supplies. And we thank you for all your generosity.
Okay, does anyone have any? Have you had time to approve the minutes from the last two minutes to take a look at them anyway? And if you have any questions or concerns or the personnel items as shown? If you're prepared to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, I would look for you to do so.
I'll make the motion. This is Anna.
Thank you, Anna. Second.
I'll second. It's Katie.
Motion by Anna, seconded by Katie. Other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the consent agenda as shown. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes, that passes by a six zero vote. Soup report. That's all part of that, Jeff?
Yes. Yep. I thought we give the meeting COVID advisory committee update Rebecca. I don't know if you want to speak to this.
Um, so we in conversation wanted to make sure that we were including the COVID advisory meeting here during the regularly scheduled board meetings, but that committee meets every week. And for folks who don't know, we get updates from the county about local numbers, updates about rates of and kind of any infections at the school as well as updates on vaccinations. So it'll we use all of that information to make determinations about current learning models. And so I believe what today is the twenty second. So most students who are not choosing to stay distance learning return to the high school today. So that's a big milestone for us. And like I said, I last weekend, I think a big graduation shout out to the staff and administration for making that happen. It certainly wasn't an easy undertaking. Trying to think about the what we talked about at the last meeting on Friday, but mostly just getting ready for Monday. And then it looks like, I don't know, Jeff, if you did I miss anything from the meeting on Friday, Jeff?
No, you're exactly right. We talked a lot about where we were at with getting prepared for today. And I know Mr. Hodges, who is on here, so he can step in here and talk if he wants. But it sounds like for all intents and purposes, everything went well today from busing through drop off through lunches. And then I didn't hear anything for the way home. So I'm assuming things went well as as planned, I guess. Mr. Hodges, do you want to give a quick snippet on how things went today?
Yeah, things went great. You know, it was great to see classrooms full and it was great to see the lunchroom with a lot more kids and a lot more kids talking at lunch, too. So that was really nice. We had we essentially doubled the number of students at each table. So I I think that helps a ton. So it was a good day all all in all.
And it was a a great effort on by a lot of people for this to happen today, anywhere from the COVID advisor committee committee all the way through the staff and the middle school, high school. And obviously, the staff throughout the entire district have been doing it all year long. So just amazing work.
A milestone of sorts, isn't it, for us today?
Well, it's just over a year since we went into distance and we haven't had all of our kids back until today. When you think about it that way.
It kind of felt like the first day of school today.
Yeah, I bet.
Any questions for either Rebecca or Tim about day one today? In the COVID advisory group in general?
I don't have a question about the advisory group or how things went today, but I do have a question about the seemingly uptick in cases at the elementary. Been getting a significant number of emails over the last couple of weeks more more than we saw in the fall when things were were bad. So I'm just wondering how that's looking for the elementary and what what level at what point do we need to start getting concerned about transmission there?
That's a great question.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Well, I think that's a great question. I'm sure you are seeing the numerous emails, whether it be over the weekend or today especially. I don't have much to say about that besides. You know, I got to be really honest with you. If we followed the recommendations by the CDC in keeping kids home when they have symptoms and or when their parents or other people in the household have symptoms, we would see a lot less full class quarantines. I can tell you that right now. So today's two cases, and actually, if you include yesterday's three total cases could have likely for sure avoided a full class quarantine. And so that's a struggle. And yeah, right now we are piecing things together and we're making it. So.
I think it's important for people to understand our in the community that just because we've gotten to this point today, doesn't mean that we can't go backwards from this point. It's still, we're still in a pandemic. We still need to mask up, social distance, wash our hands, follow the CDC guidance, you know, communicate with the school when your children are sick. And if they are exhibiting symptoms, please keep them at home. And it, you're right. I mean, we're at a point where I don't know if the cases will get us, but the staffing will get us of the ones that are being put out on close contact. And that'll be at a moment notice, unfortunately. And I, you know, we're getting close. Unfortunately.
Yeah, I I would agree. It feels it feels pretty pretty close right now. And I don't have much, I don't have much else to add aside from we're continuing with our same mitigation strategies. But what you feel as an increase is happening in Good Hugh County right now. There is an increase.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I was just going to say, Jeff, you kind of took the words out of my mouth in terms of like, you know, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but it's easy to shift backwards. And so I appreciate that reminder for everybody that we all have a hand to play and, you know, being able to continue this for students.
Absolutely.
Would you be able to give an update about the vaccination? I mean, that's a little bit more of a positive news.
Sure. From a standpoint of all of our staff, all of our staff have been offered at least their first shot at this point. And a lot of them, I believe by the end of this week, there's a large group going for their second shot at the end of this week here. We are starting to transition into helping out the community vaccination. We are expanding our our usage of our of our buildings from now until the I believe we scheduled until at least the end of May or end of June, longer hours on Friday. And there are a few Saturdays in there as our companies in town start vaccinating their employees that are reaching the priority list piece. And so I'm pretty excited about the the support that we're not only providing our staff, but also providing our our community from that standpoint as well. Is that kind of what you're looking for, Rebecca?
Yeah.
I do have a question for the middle school, high school. I'm just wondering, you know, I know just in being out in the community and and everything that we've done and going to basketball games, those kinds of things, just noticing the masking and inappropriate, like not wearing the mask correctly. those kinds of things, um, just noticing the masking and inappropriate, like not wearing the mask correctly and those kinds of things. And I saw in a several of the parent emails and, and things that, um, that not wearing your mask properly was not going to be tolerated. And I was just wondering how you intend to, um, enforce that? And if it will be enforced for, for the kids to be asked to go home if, if they're not wearing their mask properly.
Are you talking about the day to day?
Yeah.
In school? Okay.
Yeah, uh, so we've been having a lot of conversations with students about wearing masks properly all year.
Okay.
And we haven't had to get to the point where, um, we've had to say to a student, if it's either wear your mask appropriately or go home, but ultimately, that's kind of what it is.
Okay.
So, um, in fact, we haven't even really had to make any parent phone calls, um, about masking. But, um, what I've told kids is this is really simple, is you know the way you're supposed to be wearing your mask. And if you refuse to do that, then I'm sorry, but you're gonna have to, um, distance learn.
Okay.
That's, it's, this is really pretty cut and dried stuff for us. We, we have some students that we have to remind all the time, especially about keeping masks over their noses. And, um, you know, I had an all school Zoom with, um, every classroom this morning, just reminding kids about, you know, wearing masks appropriately, especially now that there are so many more students together and social distancing is so much harder to do. You, you know, I really hope, we've been able to avoid at the middle school, high school, having to do large scale quarantining because of, um, students being around somebody who's infected. But now that kids are closer together, that, that may be happening, uh, in the middle school, high school. So, uh, you know, I just try to reason with kids and say, think about what's important to you. For everybody that I've talked to, it's important to be in school. And if we want to continue to do that, then we've all got to do the right thing. We've got to wear our masks appropriately. We've got to wash our hands and we've got to do the best we can, social distancing.
Good. Thanks.
And since we've got a little off the beaten track here, I would, I would ask Reed how, how the, um, winter season went as far as masking up and discipline issues within that. And I think I saw Reed on.
Yeah, Reed is on. Reed? Oh, hang on, he just texted me. He may be having technical. I'll see if I can get him to.
You know, if there's an issue, we can, we can move forward and pick Reed up a little bit later. Just to, just to give us an update.
I'll let you know when he gets back in here.
Sure.
Specifically about one sport if you wanted, otherwise you can wait till Reed.
I think Steven's down here also. We could probably talk about girls' basketball, as long as Josh talking boys.
Sure, sure.
Uh, you know, I, I know what Kay's talking about, other schools and the kind of chin strap sort of, uh, um, face mask that she may be witnessing. Really, for our guys, we had a, we told them the first day, I don't want to wear it. You don't want to wear it. Nobody does. We don't like it. But this is how we played. And, uh, for the most part, we really didn't have, uh, an issue with our boys. Generally, if there was an issue, it was remediated really quickly with reminder, hey, put it up, get it over your nose. And, uh, so I would say from that standpoint, uh, we were pretty successful. In terms of quarantine or missing anything, we got through our horn entire season with, uh, you know, play every game that we were scheduled for. There are a couple of teams that we had, uh, games lost to because of an issue they had. Fortunately for varsity, we were able to get that game rescheduled. We got our full complement of eighteen regular season games in our playoffs. So, um, all things considered, a successful season, uh, for us to be on the court and be able to play.
Yes, I do want to say that our boys did a really good job of, of masking up and that it was just seeing some of those other teams and how they were wearing them. And I'm just curious if, if we had any of those issues in our own high school that I didn't know about. So that's, thanks, Josh.
Yeah, yeah, it gets frustrating. We remind our players, kind of, uh, the saying is kind of around here, but mind your own barber. And we take care of us and do us and take, do our, what we need to do is stay on the court and hopefully, uh, and we were able to, hopefully were able to make it all the way through the entire season and get all those games done. So I was pretty proud of our guys for being, and I know it's not ideal. It's, I don't know that I want to run around with a mask on my face, but I'm pretty proud of our guys for what they did this season.
I can echo everything that Josh said, just about the girls' program. Nothing too much to add, other than, yeah, just proud of the girls. They did things the right way. We always did the constant reminders to them. Um, and they didn't like it, but they knew that if they wanted to play basketball, they had to do it the right way. And they did it. And I was very proud of them. Not every school always did it that way, but again, it was nice to see that we were doing things the way we were supposed to do it.
Um, I, I will echo from what I've seen, you know, both here and, and other schools. We don't want to always compare ourselves to other schools, but I, what I can say, when you look between our fall and winter sports and considering what's going on, um, in southeastern Minnesota with other teams. Um, I think we've had a very good run, successful run of, uh, what we've been doing. Could some of that be luck? Yep. Um, we, you know, we, we've had a few close calls, I would say. Um, but for the most part, I think we've had good mitigation strategies and our students and coaches have done a great job with their athletes.
Thank you. I guess we'll call that old business. Now we'll move on to new business. And under the new business, we've got consideration to approve the updated nineteen through twenty one strategic plan document. Jeff?
Yes, uh, with all of the, uh, COVID fun that we've had this year. We've had, uh, some items that we were able to, uh, move forward with on the strategic plan. And on that document, uh, those are in tan, uh, that have been completed. And then we've changed a few, uh, dates in the document. Uh, in looking at next year's, ahead to next year's goals, at least for myself and for the district, I'd like to start focusing on, uh, the first item here. This is a very large item with the comprehensive communication plan. Uh, the communication plan not only is what it states it is, but it's also, um, a marketing plan as well. And so we will be starting on that yet this spring and then continue that through next year in a lot of those dates. And then as we continue down through here, there are a few, uh, items that are, uh, that have been completed. And then there are a few items down nor, near the bottom that will also be looking at getting going again next year, hopefully in a quote unquote, normal year. Any questions on any of these items?
Can I go back up to the top? Jeff, I just had a question about, um, some of the dates, the first, in the, up to the, like, there you go. Um, where it says, so the, the column where you have some date change suggestion, if you're gonna bring in the consultant in twenty two, but train staff on marketing, the September before, is that, should that be twenty two or is?
Should have been twenty one. I don't know how that got changed. Yep, you're right. I can actually change that right now. Good catch.
Anyone else have any comments, questions?
Well, Brenda is joining us again. She must have fell off somehow. Okay, she should be back in now.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, comments about the strategic plan document from nineteen to twenty one? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the updated version as shown.
I'll make the motion. This is Anna.
Thank you, Anna. Second?
I'll second. This is Rebecca.
Rebecca, thank you. We have a motion in the second on the floor for the approval of the updated strategic plan. Any other discussion? A yes would be for that approval. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda? Maybe she's muted. Bob? Yes. Brenda, with us?
Yep, she's here. I'm not sure if she can hear us. I can see her.
I think for purposes of being accurate, we won't count her vote.
So I would, yes, yeah. Looks like she's connecting to audio. If you give it just another second.
Yep.
Yep, there she is, back again.
Brenda, did you, did you listen to the strategic plan information? And we all voted, um, so far to accept it as shown. Uh, how would your vote be?
Whoop, she was. I think you're muted. Brenda?
Okay. Yeah, I had to call it on my phone. So.
Yep.
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. Thank you. Item number two, consideration to approve the Cannon Valley Senior Center Agreement.
The board has asked to, uh, bring this document back, uh, each year. And so this is the, uh, agreement that I'm asking to approve again. And I recommend that we do approve it. I think it's been a good deal for, for, um, both the seniors and for the district.
Anyone like to comment? If we have no comment, I would look for a motion to approve the senior citizen agreement as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Katie?
Yes.
I'll second, Bob.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Bill. Other discussion? Okay. Close discussion, a yes vote for the approval of the senior citizen, senior center agreement. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Okay, item three, consideration to approve a leave of absence for twenty twenty one or twenty one, twenty two in accordance with statute one twenty two A point four six sub D two.
Is this leave of absence request is from Chris Sampson? And I recommend approval.
Okay.
I made a question to approve.
Brenda, on the motion? Second?
I'll second. Oh, sorry, Anna.
That's okay.
Um, since voices can be the same, Rebecca, were you one of those too?
Yeah, I think I beat Anna by just a, a hair there, so.
All right. Uh, Rebecca will put on as a second. Other discussion? Okay, a yes vote would be for the approval of a leave of absence for Chris Sampson. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes, that passes by a six zero vote. Okay, the addition that we put on as a consideration to approve a leave of absence for the remainder of the year. I think Jeff, in accordance with statute one twenty two A dot four six sub D two.
Jeff? No, I, I'm sorry. There should be a clarification on that. This is an intermittent FMLA leave. So it's a little bit different than that, uh, one that was previously passed.
Okay.
This one is for the remainder of the year. You are correct, but it is for an intermittent FMLA for Cal Van De Hoof.
Intermittent FMLA, okay. And it's accordance with the statutes, uh, in our contractual obligations, correct?
Yes, yeah, this is for a family medical leave act and, uh, and obviously that is a, uh, in our contract as well.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve.
Like a motion to approve.
Who again? Who won that conversation? Was it?
I think Katie had it.
Thank you. Uh, in the second?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Anna, on the second. Other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the intermittent family medical leave act for the remainder of the school year. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Hey, that passes by a six zero. Okay, I would encourage us all to, uh, continue to review our, um, our cheat sheet, that laminated piece that you were all sent. And, uh, we had some talk before some of you was here, were here, that there was actually two of them. The first one would have been an incorrect one. You probably saw one come through the snail mail today.
Yeah.
So just a reminder to, uh, not use that original one. There were things in there that probably were not in context with what we were doing. So the second one is more of a, um, more accurate and up to date. And I would certainly ask you to, uh, understand what we're gonna talk about with our community. Tomorrow, Jeff and I are meeting with Rotary on a Zoom meeting and, uh, uh, Jeff, you've been through how many so far?
I've had, uh, tomorrow should be, I believe, the, the fifth one of the small group, uh, presentations.
And how are things going in general, if we can ask?
Um, there's some good questions out there, but, um, I haven't had anybody yet tell me I'm crazy in regards to the bond referendum that we're asking for. There may be some other things. Um, but, uh, as far as the upcoming special election, uh, there's, we've seen some support for it. I haven't had anybody come out and flat, tell me no, that they're not gonna vote for it. So that's, that's encouraging. Usually you get a few people that have, that will come out and, and voice an opinion that's negative. But haven't heard anything yet. Um, I'm sure I will at some point. But, um, all we can do is present information and let them know what our needs are.
And as the survey has indicated, there's a percentage of people that said, no at this time, but please give us more information, which is, the intention is, as we get closer, so.
Right.
Um, our next regular board meeting is April twelfth. And, uh, Jeff, expand on that April twelfth meeting. That is.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be an in-person meeting. If you still wish to join us via Zoom, there is that option. Um, but I would encourage as many board members to come as possible. Uh, it'll be in the auditorium. We will have social distancing up on the auditorium stage. Um, I will give a, a presentation for the special election that night. Uh, we will also have a, um, public forum for review and comment to be held as well. Uh, we will be joined by Cross Anderson, ISG, and Ellers that night, uh, either in person or, um, via Zoom to answer anybody's questions that may come up specifically about the project that is above my pay grade, if it's mechanical engineering or, uh, very detailed financial pieces. So. Um, and then it'll be business as usual after that with the rest of the items that evening.
So are, are we, um, are we gonna, we're not gonna totally focus on our, on our upcoming bond issue slash referendum, I guess, uh, that will be part of our regular meeting?
Yeah, yep. We'll, we'll start off with that and then, um, uh, continue into our regular meeting agenda items later. I figured it'd be a good choice to have it that night since everybody already has that night reserved for the board meeting anyway.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for the cause team? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion. Okay, I'll second. I'll second.
We are really, really good at timing things today.
You know, your timing is just exactly right. Was Brenda on the second and I didn't pick up the first?
Rebecca with the motion.
Usually this is the toughest one to, uh, to move, I guess. So we got Rebecca on the motion to adjourn and Brenda on the second. Any other discussion? I was gonna say. Um, I was gonna say, oh, in favor, but then it gonna work, um, Bob, yes, Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero vote, we are officially adjourned, thank you all for attending, good conversation.